So you can all hear me. We will call this meeting to order. You have a roll call, please.
Trustee DeBoer?
Here.
Tretschel?
Here.
Flifer?
Here.
Holquist?
Here.
Trustee Walsh Leger is excused this evening and I have not heard from trustee Connor, but so maybe he's running late and President Fanner still.
I am here. I have not checked my email in the last half hour or my text messages, so I haven't heard from trustee Connor, but he may have messaged. And maybe at work, running late. With that, we have the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by trustee DeBoer. Please remove your caps and stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you trustee DeBoer, and as we head towards Veterans Day, thank you for all of your family's service. Trustee DeBoer has a husband that spent quite a few years in the military and also a son that is overseas now, so. Public comments, anybody that would like to speak in public comments, please step towards the podium. Anybody on Zoom? Would the person on Zoom like to speak in public comments? Anyone else in the room, last chance to speak in public comments. All right, first item on our agenda, approval of the minutes from the October 13th meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from October 13th?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstained.
That motion is carried with one abstention. Now we have consideration of the vouchers for payment for $61,668.95.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment to the vouchers for $61,668.95.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the bills. Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have review and consideration of items. These are related to licenses and permits, the first one being a restricted species permit application for Terry Pardoon. If I'm pronouncing that wrong, I apologize. It's for three dogs at 202 Glen Owen Drive. Is that person here? If you'd like to step towards the podium, please state your name, state your address, and a very brief description of what you're doing. We know it's for dogs, but.
Terry Pardoon, 202 Glen Owen Drive, Heartland, Wisconsin.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or want any information from the applicant?
I just have one for chief. Just we have a history here, anything we need to worry about?
So actually why Mr. Pardoon is here is because Officer Monday had contact with him back on October 13th of this year, and the reason for that contact was a neighbor had called in because he knew that there was three dog ordinance in the village of Heartland if you had more than two of the same species. But the other issue was that he said that the dogs charged at him while he was getting his, taking his garbage out. He didn't go on to say that the dogs run all over the yard, but they do not leave the yard. Officer Monday did appear confirm that with the resident here. Sounds like you have an electric fence on the property, so that sounds like they run probably up to where that electric fence is, where it may appear like they're going to be running towards you, but it doesn't sound like they ever leave the yard or nothing that the police department advised of. So that's how this kind of came to light. We noticed that the dogs were not licensed or that he had a proper restricted species permit for the over the two, more than two species. So Officer Monday did ask him to license the dogs and then obviously take care of that restricted permit, which he is here trying to do now. Obviously, we can only license the two. We can't license the third till the village board were to take action and either approve or deny that request. The only other incident I have in our record management system is from 2018. It's actually December 3rd of 2018. This was a called in complaint about dogs continually barking. When we made contact, there was a caregiver at the residence and she did state that the dog has been. She is new caregiver for the resident and is new to the dog. So it just sounded like there was an issue with this person not being familiar with the dogs. So she tried to just send the dog outside, which and then got called in upon due to that. And that was the only issue we had is in 2018 up until this most recent in October of this year.
How old are the dogs?
Oakley's going to be eight, Remy is four, and Oliver just turned two. It's mom, dad, and one of the puppies, so.
So it sounds like they're pretty contained, given the invisible fence and that other incident goes back seven years.
Correct. And that was just for barking and it sounds like it wasn't the resident, so it was a caregiver that just wasn't familiar with the dog. We had no other barking issues and then just this latest thing with the dogs running around always in the yard though, they never, to our knowledge, have left the yard.
Do you have a question? I just wanted to make a motion to approve Mr. Pardon's request for three dogs at 202 Glen Owen Drive.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the restricted species permit for three dogs at 202 Glen Owen Drive. Any discussion? The only thing that I want to add, just in trying to be cognizant for the surrounding people or people that may be walking by. I'm going to vote for it. I think you should be able to have the three dogs, but I want you to know that when there's an electric fence, especially if someone's walking by with children,
Yeah.
you know that they're not going to leave the yard.
Correct.
It's a terrifying experience if someone, even if it isn't a child, that's walking, that thinks that the dogs might charge. I want to, I'm not forcing this. I'm strongly encouraging you that when they're unattended, I understand electric fence may work, but in this capacity in a village this size where properties are that close together, I think it's not a bad idea to have them on an actual leash for the for the mindset of people that may be walking by. If you're not outside with the dogs,
Right.
if they're just out there, it's a terrifying experience, especially for a child, but even for an elderly person and most people, especially if they're not familiar with dogs, they don't know that that collar is a invisible fence. And if a dog is running, that dog knows he's going to stop and you know they're going to stop, but that person is going through an immense amount of fear when that's happening. I would strongly encourage you to have actual leashes if the dogs are unattended, meaning you're not in eyesight to be able to say it's okay or something. Cause it's a really scary, I know people depend on those also if your power goes down and those dogs go through that thing, which they probably wouldn't. There's nothing you're there to do to stop them and we would rip the the restricted species permit thing away. You really should be keeping an eye on them and not just, but I'm just, I'm going to vote for it. I'm just letting you know that depending on that, you're putting a lot of faith in that electric fence.
Yeah, most of the kids in the neighborhood across the street and then next three doors down, they always come to the door and ask if they can play with the dogs. So I let them out and they play with them.
No, I get it. I'm just saying if someone is walking by and they're running to the line like one of the stories was saying, that person thinks they were charging, they weren't, they were going to stop right at the line. But that person isn't familiar and thinks that they're charging. I'm just throwing it out there on how the other people feel that aren't familiar, that aren't from the neighborhood that may be walking by, so.
Okay.
Just food for thought.
That's fair.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Your, your permit will be granted.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good mail to you.
Thank you.
Now we have a special event application for Birch and Banyan Coffee for Mindful Me. This is the Mental Health Resource Fair on Saturday, May 16th, 2026. I thought we did this already. Jesse, go ahead.
Start the conversation and now this is to hopefully, if I understand correctly, tonight would be getting permission to actually move it to the road. I talked to everyone I could get ahold of, of the businesses near me. Haven't had any pushback or any problems. Which it's nice as being on a weekend, the vast majority of businesses by me won't be affected at all. And even like Playhouse doesn't have anything till that night. I haven't been able to get ahold of Chef Fekker, but you know, Zesty's not until the evening, so so far no concerns. So my hope is to officially be able to move to the village after, or to the street after tonight, so I can continue. I'm kind of at the capacity of organizations from last year, if I'm staying in the lot. So I'm just kind of in a holding pattern right now of can I go seek more if I can move?
And the, if you recall the race, the run was a part of it. She's going to let, at a later date, wants to get this in the street and see what goes on with that, so.
Yeah, because either way I want this part to be in the streets and then yeah, as the planning goes and I'll connect with AB Corcoran again to see if we still want to do that 5K portion.
Question I had on here, it says, you know, 60 boosts and then another 100 for 80. That's if you keep getting more or where you're at right now.
Yeah, it's kind of my guesses because I'm not really looking for more right now because if I can't move, I'm full. But you know, I know from last year I had 40 and I had 12 or 13 or something on a waitlist. So I'm very confident that I would be able to get to at least 60 and my guess is that's 60 to 80 range. So that's why the map is a little bit of a question mark because I don't know for sure.
No, I might want to, because I already thought you passed it.
I'll make a motion then to approve the application Birch and Banyan Coffee for the Mindful Me Mental Health Resources Fair on Saturday, May 16th, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This is on the floor. I did want to give chief a chance to speak on this.
The only note I made is if we're going to shut the road down, which I'm perfectly fine with, no, no concerns with that, is we just have to make sure it's at the intersection. So whether they get those boosts or not, I really would like to have that where we're shutting it down at intersections. So we really have to be like Goodwin and Church. And the reason being is if we pushed it further west past Church, people can't just drive into a closed road. They have to have a outlet to get around and do whatever. So it's got to be at an intersection that we'd have barricades of some sort and then that portion would be closed.
Sure. I know, I think it was Heartland Lights a couple of years ago, there was talk of possibly closing that part. And then there was talk of turning in the bank's parking lot. So that's why I put the note in. If, if it's only the 60, maybe that could be a turnaround, but that was just a suggestion.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with that as long as the bank, like we don't control the bank.
Yeah.
And I know we don't control it. I'm just throwing this out there and wondering, is there a chance we could go to? Is there a chance we could go to Riverwalk?
Yeah.
And stop there? Here's the only reason I'm asking is we have the couple of residents that are up there. I know the other ones are businesses. I was just, I'm just wondering, I know we don't control where Riverwalk, but we also can't stop traffic from going through there, even though they're not supposed to use it as through traffic, but I was just wondering.
We as the village typically don't try to divert traffic through private property and just, because we don't know what that's going to look like. And then if there's damage, we don't want to be brought into that conversation because someone trying to cruise through there quickly because they're late or whatever else. So we just always close it at intersection. So we just be looking to say, Goodwin, I think is the initial east part of it.
It would, it would just be extending it a little further east to Church.
I see what you're, that does make sense because then you can divert traffic up that road. I was thinking about the houses, but it actually won't make a difference if you, if you don't extend past that portion of Riverwalk. I was thinking of Riverwalk people being able to get out. And, but they have another side they can get out, but it's very hard to turn cars around in there, but more so I was thinking about those houses that are there. But if it was closed and they come and said, I got to leave, as long as there's not an event going on up there, we probably would let them leave.
Yeah, and some of the larger vehicle traffic, garbage trucks, box trucks, all that, we don't want to try to push through private property either, just so they're using the roads appropriately.
So I guess to clarify, we'll close it, but if someone at the house wanted to leave that lives there, they'd be able to leave probably.
You're talking at Riverwalk?
No, I'm talking more so there's, there's a couple of residences that are there. The house right next to Sitco has a resident. Well, that wouldn't be affected.
Yeah, he'd be fine.
That house that always people were parking in front of their driveway is the one I'm thinking about.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think they're on the east side of church though, so they should be good, aren't they?
No.
They're on the west side. They are on the west side of church, yeah.
They could pull on and get, go through Riverwalk.
I'm saying like we, the vent wouldn't go past Riverwalk, so there should be no traffic there unless it's someone that lives there. I guess that's kind of where I was getting to and I think.
And that probably would be one of the only ones that couldn't get out.
Right. I think it would be. So it's one of those situations where there's no through traffic.
163 Capital, Mr. Mullins Building, there would be others that would have to do barricades.
Yeah, there's a couple, but not many. Well, Mullins is going to be right in the event space. They're not going anywhere. They'll have to just be told now that he's got a resident living there at the old Flynn.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Attorney.
Yep.
I'd let them know, park at Riverwalk or park up the way, just so they can get to their car or whatever, because you're not going to want to stop the event and let a car out.
And I'll do a lot.
And people always, some, not saying they would, but there's people that are like, oh, I have to be able to leave. And all of a sudden you're moving tables and booths. I'm just trying to.
Yeah, once we get closer and spraying, I'll do a lot more talking with everybody.
There is a mailing that's required, so that will, I think, explain to people what your plan is.
And that's what usually takes care of any of the issues is they understand when that road closure is and make appropriate accommodations for that.
Yep.
The only other recommendation we would have is we'll put barricades out.
Yep.
But you would be, maybe you wouldn't be, but people drive around barricades?
Yeah.
We could go to State Highway 83 right now and I could show you all night how that works, even though the barricades are curb to curb. I would probably put like a vehicle across the road just so someone can't try, they think they could get through, they sneak through.
Like they're by Goodwin.
And you don't want either intoxicated elderly, someone that thinks they could get by on either side. I just bookend it on your side of the barricades.
Yep.
Some type of hard closure that someone that wants to move a barricade or sneak around then can't, cannot do that.
Yeah, makes sense.
And we do, they have Palmer's does the same thing for their type of event.
Yep, that makes sense.
Anybody else? All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it. Should be great. Oh, yeah, anybody that goes, Jesse, I think you know this, but you do not have to stay and it will be not be frowned upon if you decide to leave. But if you'd like to sit and see all the village business that goes on at a meeting, come to others also. Some are much longer, so you get a lot more information than just this one. This one might be a little quick, but you're more than welcome to leave and it won't be frowned upon. Thank you. Now we have a public hearing on the 2026 village budget, including the general fund, water and sewer utility funds, the debt service, and all their other revenue and expenditure funds with consideration of adoption of the budget on the 10th of November, at the November 10th meeting, 2025. This doesn't mean for sure that it would pass, but that's what the public hearing is for. So anybody that would like to speak on the public hearing or on the budget that's been proposed that they've read? Sure? No one? All right. We'll close the public hearing. Public hearing was open, it's now closed. Okay, the agenda read, I'm going to read it as it was read and then I'm going to state it properly. The agenda read as is in front of you, I believe, consideration of a resolution number 1027 2025 authorized the issuance and sale of 5 million 75,000 in general obligation promissory notes, series 2025A. And I'm going to read it as, and if everybody wants to write it down, consideration of a resolution number 1027 2025, authoring the issuance and sale of 5 million 5,000 in general obligation promissory notes, series 2025A.
That's just strictly because that's how the sale came. Greg from Ellers can talk about this.
So we just saved 70 grand?
Well.
I mean, we just spent 75 grand less. Or you want to look at it.
Good evening. You should have a copy of the sale report for the note sale that was conducted this morning. This is financing the village's capital improvement projects. The village typically borrows funds every other year for larger infrastructure projects. After the cover page is an executive summary. A total of eight bids were received on the notes, which is a strong number of bids. The final true interest cost came in at 3.5625%. The total net principal and interest for the notes over the 20-year term came in $632,304 less than the estimate that we provided to the village board last month. As was just mentioned, due to lower costs of issuance expenses based on the final bid results, the amount that you're borrowing was reduced to the $5 million, $5,000. So you have the same amount for project costs, just had to issue less debt to pay for them, which is always a good outcome. Just a couple of the attachments I want to point your attention to. After the executive summary is the bid tabulation where you see the bids submitted by all eight bidders. Good representation from throughout the country in terms of underwriters interested in the notes. And then the rest of the exhibits are the same as what I presented last month, just updated with today's sale results. I just want to draw your attention to two of the pages. Table four, which is the final amateurization schedule. The majority of the capital projects, you'll repay for the debt service with your levy for debt service. The portion related to water and sewer projects will be repaid by water and sewer revenues. So the total net principal and interest of $6,797,304. That's again, that's six. That's again, that's six in theory, two thousand, three hundred dollars less than our estimate presented last month. And then on the tax impact analysis on page five, um, this just shows your existing debt, uh, these proposed notes. And then just for planning purposes, shows financings out over the next couple of years. The tax levy impact is right in line with what we presented, uh, last month. So your debt service levy, uh, is changing by about twenty-five thousand dollars from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. The other item in the report, which I encourage you to look at when you have time, is the rating report from Moody's. Uh, we went out and had the rating call with Moody's Investor Services. Ryan did a great job representing the village, providing overview of financial and economic development activity. The village's double A two rating was affirmed, which is an excellent rating. So again, the action item is to approve the resolution awarding the sale of five million, five thousand dollars of general obligation promissory notes. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You don't know anywhere else that we can get money a little cheaper, do you? I'm kidding. I have no question.
It's free for six months.
No, it's good for the times. It's a little different than it was a few years ago.
It is, but still very low by historical standards.
Yes, sir. I was just being.
That's true.
Adding some comedic flair. Or attempting to, I should say.
We need a motion.
Uh, yeah, it's a, yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the resolution number ten, twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, authorizing the issuance and sale of five million and five thousand dollars in general obligation promissory notes, series two thousand twenty-five A.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number ten, twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, authoring the issuance and sale of five million, five thousand dollars in general obligator obligation promissory notes, series twenty twenty-five A. Discussion, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much for coming in to explain. I do want to remind the board, most of you know this, in fact, I know all of you know this. Excuse me. We will have one more time here on November tenth. That's where, I mean, it's kind of boring for us, but we literally go through each category.
Of the budget, yes.
Yeah. I'm just letting them know. We've borrowed the money now so we can approve all the items that we have in the budget, but we'll be going line by line. That's where we need a roll call vote on all of them. I was just letting you know. And then the whole entire budget, then we'll be solidified on that for next year. Jesse, and I also say it's about the public knows. Ryan's always gotta interrupt me. All right, items from the plan commission meeting. No one wants to laugh today. Everybody wants to get home and watch the World Series that we're not in. Village Board reviewing consideration of T-Long Products addition at.
Nope, no, that was taken off.
Andy again, wants to interrupt me. Village Board review and consideration of T-Long Products addition at one, 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 zero, Richards Road. This was set forth and came forward from the Plan Commission Meeting. Trustee Holquist already knows this, but this was unanimous and came right to us. We did not see any issues with it, if I remember correctly. Yeah. So I have nothing for them. It came forward from plan.
Are you gentlemen here, I'm sorry, are you here by chance for the four twelve cottonwood or not? Okay, good.
Anybody here for T-Long? If you'd like to step to the podium, just in case someone has questions, there might be a motion before you even get there.
Daniel Ayala with Oliver Construction, speaking on behalf of T-Long Products.
Would you mind just giving a quick summary as to what this entails?
Yeah, it's a seventy-six hundred square foot of shipping and receiving warehouse addition on the south side of the property. It's gonna reside in what is currently, uh, asphalt parking lot. And we're gonna, and the intent and, and currently designed to match all the finishes of the existing building with concrete brick masonry, same building height of the existing building as well. And some minor landscaping to uphold the, um, zoning requirements for plantings at the building and in the parking lot as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
I will make a motion that we approve the T-Long Products addition at one, 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 zero, Richards Road.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. To approve the, um, addition at T-Long Products at eleven, ten, Richards Road, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much for coming, you guys. Uh, now we have a consideration of acceptance of the rest wa, rest, West Rock Apartment Building Infrastructure Improvements. We don't really have, it's always different than at Plan Commission because we like have the.
Yeah, so just to give you a little bit of background, all that we're doing here, this is just the public infrastructure that they put in that we accept and take in. It's not everything on the part, on the property. It's just the actual public pieces which are out by the road. So there's not a ton here, um, especially with everything private. And this was approved by Rooker and Milky.
Yeah, uh, not last week, but the week before, we did a walkthrough inspection basically. So the meter pit, um, and all those connection points into our sanitary, um, have been inspected and approved by R and M.
Does R and M give a letter or something? Just wondering, like that, oh, it isn't, okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of West Rock Apartments' public infrastructure improvements.
Second.
And moved and seconded to approve the, uh, acceptance of West Rock Apartment Building Infrastructure Improvements. Do a discussion. I just, Tom, I wanted to ask, so this is just minor compared to the overall, all the things that are gonna be coming on, correct? Because there will be, will there be, actually, it's private, so we won't go through and check their curbs and stuff, will we?
Right, yeah.
Like where they have to do cutouts, where there's.
Correct. I mean, they're still, they're still building it to the standards that Scott Hussinger has inspected, but it doesn't come on the public side like mine. As soon as it hits the meter pit basically and, and goes out from that pit.
Yep.
Then it's private.
Correct. Okay, so this is the connections of where it's connected to our entire system. This is all the stuff that's closer to the road.
Yep.
Near the edges of the property line, because then inside they still have to meet the guidelines, but that's your portion's done then.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Got it. All, anybody else with questions or anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Those infrastructure improvements will be accepted. Now we have a discussion and possible recommendation regarding registered sex offender residency restrictions.
So we just wanted to bring this back. Everyone had asked, so there's a couple of maps. I think you guys all got the maps too. What it would look like at, at other foot, uh, other footage throughout the village. So it's just kind of for you guys. There's nothing that could be voted on and changed tonight, but if there's something that you wanted to bring back through the ordinance process, we could.
I can say that, you know, from a discussion standpoint. I haven't actually reviewed a ton of this. I did look up towards the Mary Hill side, even if we increased one of them. I mean, it still wouldn't bump the last person that came in. I'm gonna kind of, I mean, I'll talk about it and I'll vote on it. And I'm, you know, I feel like the board kind of did a good thing with the seven hundred and fifty feet, but if the board wanted to go further, I myself right now don't see a strong. I believe that what we have in place right now is lowering, and I'd love it if Chief would give a comment on it. But I believe that what we have in place right now, not saying that that's what Chief thinks, but I think it's lowering the amount we have. And I think the course with having something in place as opposed to having nothing in place like we used to, I believe it is going to continue to go down. I can't say how fast, but it seems like it's going down at one to two every three years based on how we have it now. We're never gonna get to zero. We're way too big of a village. But, I mean, we could get to zero, but it's highly unlikely. But if we wanted to, I'm, I'm not against doing it. I just, I, I think we're pretty locked in. And even if we went to a thousand, that would not have prevented the last person that moved in. And if we go to one thousand, two hundred and fifty feet, I don't think there's enough of the village to live in that opens us up. That's, I, I didn't look really, really close, but I, you know, I it'd be in the spotlight also while we're deciding this. Other municipalities, when we compare to them, they're not in it for whatever reason, but that's because we put a moratorium long for the fences and did very well with it, but just, I'm just throwing in my thoughts. We're not even voting on anything tonight, or it doesn't appear we are, but those are, I'm just kind of throwing it out there.
Go to the mic.
Microphone, please. Are you here for that session?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Did you?
Josh Neve.
Are all three of you here for that issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we look into the exception at Four Winds because of the bus issue? Like, so could you leave it at seven fifty and then Four Winds gets an exception because of the bus? That's, that was the concern at the private meeting.
I understand that the, guys, I wish you would have spoken public comment, but I'm gonna let you speak now. So here's how we're gonna do this. Because it's our last item, I'm gonna let them speak because they didn't know. So what I would like you to do is take three or four minutes to speak so that the board hears what you're saying. We may do Q and A back and forth. When we're looking at ordinances, though, I want you to understand, when we're in this boardroom, I understand there was the private meeting and I was serious about everything I said. But we have to look at everything for the whole village. We can't look at one pocketed area. So moving one area affects other areas, but I do want to hear you guys. So if you guys would like to speak, all you gotta say is your name and your address. I'm gonna allow public comment now, because I take it you guys didn't know and you thought you'd be able to speak on the item. So I'm gonna let you speak now so we know what you're thinking. Sorry that I stopped you. I just wanted to get us all on the same field.
So, uh, Josh Neve, three, three, four, Holly Hawk Lane, um, Heartland, Wisconsin. Four Winds neighborhood, we live in a neighborhood that does not have a bus to the school, which is where the most recent offender moved in. And we feel as though without the bus, these children have to walk to school every day and are endangered because of that. And so, um, we felt as though we could look at an exception for our neighborhood due to that bus restriction. We felt we stood out in comparison to other neighborhoods that have a bus where children can get safely from their door to the school as opposed to walking. And I was curious if we could put an exception in, maybe not bump the seven fifty up, but put an exception in for our neighborhood going forward because of that.
Right.
I, I mean, Drew can speak too, but I feel as though it'd be hard for a judge to shoot that down knowing that we don't have a bus for our children to get to school safely.
Sure. Does anyone else want to speak? I'm gonna take them, I'm gonna let them all speak so we know what we're addressing.
Sure.
Does any, if you want more time, I'll give you more time. Okay. I just, I'm saying all this because I don't, sometimes people get upset. They're like, wait, no, I want to go talk more. And I'm like, okay, we gotta have some rhythm here. Does anybody else want to speak? Or not? Okay, okay. If you, yeah, if you could, please, thank you. We're recording it all.
How am I, in social security number? Tony Sarniky, three fifty-five sunshine. The only thing I would add, there's two things that stood out to me, I was just curious about, is one is how, which we talked about in the meeting, the comparison to other surrounding communities. And legally, the advice we're getting is a village from our lawyers and such about why we need to be lower. Because it seemed as though the other areas were higher. And then the idea of exceptions when partials of subdivisions are covered, but not the whole subdivision. Because it is a bit of an oddity for us that there's a portion of the area that is covered, but there's portions that's not, and you get into these weird situations we have, so.
I'll touch on that, sure.
Is there questions or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll touch on that.
Sure.
Any, you sure? Okay. I'm gonna address the port, I'm gonna address the neighborhood for, now this, I don't want you to take this as I'm speaking from law. As an elected official, I'm not saying it from law. I'm saying it to the best of my understanding. Chief, please correct me if I'm wrong or any other trustees. I didn't specifically ask, uh, unless I did in the meeting, but I don't recall specifically asking if there could be a neighborhood exemption. Now, even if we made an exemption now, I want everybody to know it would not change. Okay. I think it has, I could be wrong, but I believe that whatever we do has to make sense all around. Like that's where, I mean, one of the things we did when we were making the law is we looked at all the trails. Kids are on trails. So that means you shouldn't be. And we even moved that some. We were like, okay, well, maybe it's five hundred feet from trails, but it covered the entire village. So it's like, okay. I mean, other than some farmland or green land. So we looked at that, but it, to the best of my knowledge, I, I can ask the attorney, I don't know about specifically saying, can this whole neighborhood be out? I do know there's other subdivisions. I don't, oh, we might be able to see which ones on here. There's other subdivisions that only a portion of the subdivision, Hart Ridge, River Reserve. Yeah, they're all, because it's, but, um, and I, can you pull this up for them so they can see what we're looking at?
And that was, one of my questions was related to that, and I don't know the answer to this, but guys that live in Hart Ridge, do the buses serve Hart Ridge? If they live that close to Heartland South, can you get a bus?
It's a mile and a half. So they don't get a bus.
So Hart Ridge.
State laws, if you have a sidewalk and you're within a mile, you don't, you get, cannot get a bus.
In Hart Ridge, yep. Arrowhead gets bus, but Hart Ridge.
Elementary school, if you're within a mile and you have a sidewalk.
Correct. And it's the same for Arrowhead. If you're within, like my kids couldn't get the bus. They actually do a mile and a half.
The rule's not hard and fast. What the schools typically go by, I believe there was two miles. If you're within a two-mile radius, they would not bus you, but there could be unusual circumstances that they would allow to bus. Uh, i.e. the subdivision doesn't have a sidewalk. Um, they have to dra, traverse a very busy intersection. This is actually under state statute that the schools could have a, a study done. It has to be done by the sheriff's department of the county. And they do a study of that area, that walking route, and then they give recommendations of these unusual hazards as they're identified in the state statute, which I would assume this could possibly qualify for that on the school side of it as well.
That's where my mind is going, because we could swallow, look at this and bust. I mean, that certainly is a.
I know the schools can bu, I mean, they can bust the person next door. The schools take advantage of not busing because they're saving money. I know at Heartland Lakeside, that's what they do. Because there was some people that called and said, no, my child has to be bused. And they, some of them were within a quarter mile. And there was some big stink on the school board where they were like, well, why aren't we charging them? Because we can. Sometimes you have people that, well, we can, so we should be charging them. And they're like, really? I, I'm just saying, so yes, it is a choice by the school. But I think that they're asking about, since it's not going on right now, especially since we're two different government entities. But Adam, you're right. To your point, I mean, the school is choosing to say, we're not gonna bust. I, I, I like Adam's point because he's saying the school could also say, since this person lives here now, we're gonna bust. But that doesn't take us away from the issue we have to address or that you're asking about.
And I think it probably goes without saying, but everybody up here would love for this to be five thousand feet, right? Like, we're all on that page.
We proved it because we had a moratorium on allowing them to move in until we were sued.
We just don't want to end up in lawsuits and all this because we're trying to block off every possible spot that they can live in the village, right? So we all, you guys understand that's where we're all at, right?
So because of the moratorium.
Could you go to the microphone, please?
Name again? So because of the moratorium, do you feel as though that's why we are so under the microscope? And we're afraid to go up from seven fifty to maybe twelve hundred or twelve fifty, whatever? Because it's moratorium, we're under the microscope? Is that what, what I'm hearing, or is that making the wrong assumption?
No, I, no. I'm, nothing I'm more proud of in this position than doing the moratorium. It was the right thing to do. And I'm not afraid to do two thousand. It can lead to costing money. And when the law is struck down, there is no law. It is wide open until something goes back in, but something, someone can even put an injunction and be like, nope, they already struck down your law. So you have to file it with the courts, have them review that it's legal, and then we'll let it fly. It's kind of like something that doesn't do anything unless all of a sudden they're looking. Then all of a sudden, they can really get you under their thumb. And so that's, my fear is I never want us to be in a position where we're dumping ground again. So yes, there is, I can, I'm gonna be totally honest with you about, and we hear about it all the time, and I'm not saying anything bad about judges or anything like that. And and I'm saying this not to say you're right or wrong, you're one hundred percent right. Except for like, when you said, like, I don't think any judge, cuz I think that you guys are truly thinking that you walk into a courtroom and that that judge, when you're watching this case, is like, he knows what he's dealing with. Why is this judge gonna side with him? That judge would run you out of the room for even thinking that that person doesn't have rights, and I know that's disgusting, and I don't agree with it. But that judge will sit and say, who are you to think that you have more rights than this person? They served their time. We've seen it, because when they came at us with a suit, we're like, you gotta be kidding me, this person doesn't even wanna move into Heartland. And you're advocating for this person, you know, in a case. What I'm trying to say to you is I know it seems nuts. It's crazy, but it is how they see it. I'm just letting, I'm, it's a lot to juggle.
That's fine. Um, do we know, though, that you cannot get an exception for a neighborhood that doesn't have buses? Okay, that's.
I'm, I'm gonna ask the attorney that. We're gonna ask the attorney that.
Yeah, I like.
And and I'm also going to ask, you kinda asked about a partition.
Yeah.
Uh, or a a portion, you know, depending, I'm gonna ask the attorney that. I just, I don't know. It makes sense to me, but now, if your subdivision would allow it, then that means the other ones could, would there still be enough places in Heartland? Cuz that's what the judge really looks at. How much of your vill- so we play the whole, we're playing the, you want ten percent rule, not ten percent of land area, ten percent of houses. We know what game we're in, cuz if, let's say there's only five percent, that's where they slam you down and say, you're not allowing enough space, but that's, that's not because Heartland was in the spotlight, that's cuz Pleasant Prairie was in the spotlight. They made restrictions, and they had a lot of land area that was open for someone to move into. The only problem was, it was all agricultural woods, and there was no residences to move in, and they said, you're cheating the system. And that's what a judge will say, they'll say, no, you're cheating the system, you're not allowing enough houses. We're gonna continue to look at it, and and see what we can tweak.
Question I have is, with all these boundaries going from seven fifty, twelve fifty, fifteen, et cetera, talking about the ten percent, do we know what each one changes the percentage to?
Uh, I don't, I don't know.
There's a way we can find that out?
Also wanna be clear, I think the president was using ten percent as like a theoretical, there's no established percentage.
Yeah, that's not, it's what we think is some type of a mark that once we go past that, we know that.
Well, into that same respect, and whatever we are at seven fifty, what, what percent is open right now, and same thing with each increment, how much do we lose? Gives me an indication.
The, the open doesn't matter, there's no law on a footage from schools or anything, this may be too little. Seven hundred and fifty feet, they may say throw it out, it's gotta be a hundred feet from a school.
Right.
So there is no.
But right now, they're not.
I'm just saying for us, what, what would it? Look at, how many homes do we still have available?
Yup.
Where it's not, we're not cutting it down, we're not gonna say we have zero, so we don't do two thousand, and it's like, five homes. But I have no idea what, how to even conceptualize this.
That would be us counting everything I'm pointing to. Cuz it's all a windrush, all a sandhill. A lot of Mary Hill, there are Four Winds, all Mary Hill, right?
Yeah, Paul Mary Hill.
Legend, yup. All Four Winds West.
And just a reminder, we did lose that child safety zone with Zion no longer offering school services on the east side of town.
The school right by my house closed.
I was gonna say that, that does not help anything for you.
What we can, what we can do too, I mean, we're gonna keep working this problem. Now, one thing we've been doing is we've been going in two hundred and fifty foot increments, and you can look, and I think Rick and Tim and all of you, I think you'd agree, when we. It's a message from God to make it bigger. It's, uh, I mean, two hundred and fifty feet moves it quite a bit. I'm just, we don't have to do it by two hundred and fifty feet, is all I was gonna say.
So, can I ask you guys, just, I I guess recommend to you guys that you talk to the school about the busing? Cuz I think that that, to Chief's point, I think that's a conversation worth having. I I'm not saying we're not gonna look at extending this either, I, like I said, I'd love to have it, but you can't live in Heartland. But even if we do that, it'll, it'll still, it'll give you another potential avenue or opportunity for getting your kids to school safely, not being concerned about having them walk to school. I'm just, my own two cents.
No, uh, makes sense. Drew Baumgartner, four oh six, pray grass. To answer that first, and and then back to why, why I'm up here. We hear, like, we've gotta cut programs and swallow because of the state funding mechanism actually being a a a negative for the swallowed school district. I'm not saying that it's gonna be out of the, out of the question, I just, I've got my own reservations as to how fruitful that's actually gonna be, right? Nobody's fault here, I understand everybody's on the same page here, I've heard, uh, President say a number of times, like, we'd prefer to keep a moratorium in place and we can't. My, my question is, like, this is all a risk spectrum thing, right? Like, it's, what is the probability that we're gonna get sued by somebody looking at the regulation in place? And saying it's too restrictive, and you kinda, I think, down to the percentage of available homes, how does it compare to other communities? What about the risk spectrum of the inverse? I don't know the answer to this, and this is not meant to be accusatory, but if something happens because we are more permissive than other communities, and somebody points at Delafield and like, that's two thousand feet, my kids walk into school, something happened. I'm gonna sue the the village for being too permissive of this happening because there was a negligence of the responsibility to protect these neighborhoods where someone, is that, uh, it, when you're talking to the attorneys, I'm sorry, is that part of the the countervailing, um, risk analysis that goes on? I don't know the answer to that, I wanna just, curious if if that's been part of.
I know the answer to that. What they would do in a courtroom is they would look as if the police department is doing the appropriate things, I mean, according to the law. And they would look at if things have been subjective, and if we've gone through the proper process. As a village, and this goes for any village, not just ours, you know, if you're just dropping the ball. What it would really come down to, honestly, if something like that were to happen, when you have people that are signed up and doing it part-time, or even if it was full-time, but you're an elected official, but it looks like you're trying to do what's right, and you're trying to balance it for everybody, my guess is that it would never go through court where they'd be like, hey, that village was wrong. I can't say for sure, I'm guessing that that's the way it would go, unless it was like how Heartland used to be, where there was absolutely no law in place because they used to believe, before my time. They used to believe, well, let's not have any law, because then they'll just come and tell us that they're moving in, which I don't agree with that at all, but that was their take. I don't think that, I think we're working really hard, like, I don't think that there's any way you could go at this board and not say it's working hard at it, but I I hear what you're saying, though.
If I can, I'll speak loud enough that you can hear me, like, it's, it's, you're, you're, I also hear a little bit of the seven fifty is a bit of a reaction to the lawsuit that you faced, right? So it is conservative in some sense that you're.
No, it's a, it's a collection of data based on the suits that have won.
Yup.
And meaning they struck down their law.
Yup.
And the suits that have been left in place. And I do wanna touch on like Delafield, like, when you say two thousand feet, you have to understand there's very different areas, so in Delafield, they have a much bigger area of land, like, you know, I mean, that area on eighty-three, I mean, we don't have farmland like that in Heartland. But you have this land that then has other residences, um, they've gotten really lucky with their, or maybe it's not lucky, maybe they're doing something right, but I've talked to them, they just leave it in place. They haven't ended up on the radar, um, like, where no one's gone. The reason I say on the radar is cuz I, I'm gonna reiterate what really goes on, cuz it happened to us. There is a group of lawyers that works out of Chicago, that, and you guys, I'm not trying to just be redundant, but they go and find people, and they say, you've been a registered sex offender, can you go and say you're gonna move in? The person didn't even wanna move into Heartland, the person didn't even appeal our process. They came and they skipped it, they didn't even contact us, they just went right to federal court and said we were stomping on their rights. The lawyers then get all of the money, maybe they get a little, maybe the person doing it gets a little bit of money, but they don't get much. And the lawyers get all the money, and they go and pick people all over the country, and they do this all day long, every day. I'm just, I know it's sick. But they do, and they just pick, cuz they're not doing it because they really, I mean, it's, it's just a sick game. It's that most people that come to us aren't like the legitimate, they're like, I really wanna live here in Heartland.
No, I get, I get, and you explained that very well last time.
But it's, I mean, it's a, it's a real pain in the you-know-what for us also, especially even this situation, like, with the last person that moved in, I'm like, did anyone go? I mean, it, it was a little bit of a frustrating point on me, I'm like, did anyone go and knock on the door and say, what are you doing? Like, to the people that already live there, like, what are you thinking? Like, you're really not, like, considering the rest of us and what you're doing here, like, don't you wanna go to a town or something? Where you can kinda get some space, you got the money for it, and like, not just make all of us go through chaos, and I'm speaking like as if I lived there? But that's what I mean, you don't see a lot of care about that. It's, why don't you care about me? What about me? My rights, and it's like, well, you kinda threw those out the window, you know, in some of our opinions, but it's a pain in the butt. It really is, for all of us, it really is, really is.
So I'm just curious then, um, I'll chalk it up to misreading the website, I thought this was the initial discussion tonight, so, thank you for opening public comment.
Yeah, sure.
So, so what is the board's view then on how to proceed with this action? Cuz I mean, I understand the, I'm not getting into constitutional rights and things like that, I actually understand, like, people have rights, I get it, but what is kind of the collective feel right now for how the village is gonna proceed with this? Like, is it, we're willing to take on more risk and increase the footage, it's, keep the same and see what happens? Like, where are you leaning right now as a board on this issue?
We're basically, we created the moratorium that went through that process. Then we had the, I mean, we were already looking at creating ordinance, we knew we would end up having to create an ordinance, but then when the lawsuit came, we got much more faster at creating the ordinance and more little more restrictive on the space. What we're doing right now is information gathering, or I feel like that's what us as members are doing, like, Rick just said, hey, let's count up these houses and find out how many residences there are. Maybe we don't know, maybe it's, maybe right now thirty percent of the houses are available, and we can go a little, you know, a little bit larger. What we do know is that whatever we do has to be uniform throughout the village, so like, we're gonna look into some things. If you take one subdivision, if the subdivision HOA requests it, can we take that and say, well, that's an exemption because of no busing? Now, that means any other one that has no busing, well, maybe that leaves enough homes, these are all, so we're kinda going back and forth, I mean, I really, we're here for the community, that's who we're elected by, and that's who we're representing, so. Uh, it's not, I don't think you're gonna see a knee-jerk reaction out of the board. The person that's in is already in, so now it's like, looking at, hey, I'm glad the focus is on it because that helps us. If we have to decide it all on our own, like, when we were going through the moratorium, people were there. And that's where the moratorium got in place, people were really hot, it was a situation just like this, cuz someone was moving in, but then people fade away. You know, it's not in their neighborhoods and they kinda fade away from it, this has happened before, where we've had someone move into other neighborhoods, but you guys don't know it because it's not in your neighborhood, so it's not like, what? But it has happened before, so I I hope that, I mean, the vigilance on it continues because it does make it easier for all of us, and I think the other board members would say so as well, when you guys are telling us what you think, cuz you're who we're representing. I don't think anyone here, like, no one here is just gonna hold the line and be like, we are not gonna make it, like, obviously, we put it on the agenda because it was time to relook at it, it's been two years. So I think that's what we're doing, is gathering information, and I think that some board members are leaning towards saying, let's give that a shot. I think this is something that may ebb and flow as time goes, I, you know, to hit the right spot, it's like, I mean, it's almost like a baseball game, it's like, play deeper. I think he's gonna hit it long, well, he didn't hit it that far the last three times, and all of a sudden, coach is like, you know, let's get in a little bit, you know what I mean? You kinda figure it out, and after a while, you know right where to stand, you can feel it out, but that's kind of what we're doing right now, you know, putting into an analogy.
So then is the process from here then, Ryan, would it be you? You guys are gonna do this analysis, Rick, like you were saying, of like, percentage of homes, look at kind of sensitivity analysis of pushing it in and out, that sort of thing?
Yeah.
And then would it come back to next meeting, public comments, review, sort of thing?
If the information's ready by then. I mean, I don't usually put them under the gun, I think it's a work, and so like, let's say, because we're going through budget and stuff, that all the information isn't ready, it may be another one down the line, but it might be next meeting.
Sure.
Someone may have a thing where they're like, oh, I can pop that information out real quick.
Okay, but that's kind of the process.
But that's, I mean, we're just trying to work it through, I mean, we feel like we have something that's somewhat safe in place. What I do know is, you, whoever's lived here longer than eight years, we have something much better than eight years ago, which was nothing.
Sure.
And I do, I really wanna tell you that I do commend the people that are on this board, and how hard everybody has worked and continues to work, and I know you guys aren't saying anything against it, I'm just saying I want you to know how hard and how serious the people on this board take it, and think that Heartland has come from having absolutely no law to having two years of of not, and not, we're figuring it out too, none of us are perfect, and we don't try to act like we are, but we wanna work with you to, so feel free to call any of us at any time, and we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna figure it out and gather the.
And now this is questioning the efficacy of the board or the efforts that were done. I think this is more about saying, what is a reasonable thing in comparison to neighboring communities and taking special circumstances into account so that we set this? Cuz, you know, these present opportunities to fix gaps, and I think that's why we're asking these questions, cuz there is a uniqueness to Four Winds, I think, in the association with Swallow, and that, like, we do walk the kids to school, and that's a little different than some of the others, but I don't think we're wholly unique, and that's what I'm curious about, kind of the village's view, the board's view, and kind of the steps in this process to get to what's right for the village.
Right. And, um, yeah, no, you're right on, and I think we need to look and see around our state, and even the country, where, possibly, there's cases where special exemption, and that's what I mean by info gathering, because all of a sudden that all got stacked up, and it's like, hey, we're covered.
President Van Der Stel, I just wanted to add, you know, I think to trustee Connor's point of understanding where we're at today, on what, what percentage of housing is available as it stands today with the seven hundred and fifty feet? What percentage would be available at twelve fifty? You know, if we can start looking at those numbers, and then we can make the best, you know, judgment on what we can change moving forward to maybe expand the zones. I think that's worth looking at, and then we collectively hopefully make the next best decision moving forward. Cuz if I had my way, they couldn't live here, but it's not reality, so.
Just the judges that come and tell us what they can. Chief, I want your, uh, I was hoping that maybe you could add, and I know that you guys have heard it, but I think it's important to reiterate these things, especially if someone does watch the meeting, and I hope that you do tell people in the HOA and the neighborhood to please, cuz I know some of the people even live in Merton, in fact, a lot of them do, please tell them, um, to, they can watch the meeting on the Village of Heartland YouTube station. To go above and, I mean, just a brief overview of, especially with Halloween coming, all the things that the police department does on a regular basis throughout the year, and especially at this time, to monitor, uh, because we are aware that they live here, what do we do to make sure to keep people safe? What do the officers do? What do you look at, you know?
So as you recall, we have ownership zones within the police department. By and large, many of those ownership zones are assigned to different neighborhoods for quality of life type issues, but we have some special ownership zones that include our schools, but then also include our sex offenders, so this is assigned to one of our detectives. They actually, uh, keep a spreadsheet, um, it's monthly checked, and then he actually makes, touches base with each and every person on this spreadsheet to make sure they're in compliance with either their supervision, which we only have three on active supervision. Uh, one of our recent placements in Four Winds is one of those three, and the uniqueness to that is it's federal supervision opposed to state Department of Corrections supervision. The rest of our, um, sex offenders are registrants, so there is that difference between you're on probation or parole, either through the federal government or the state of Wisconsin, an active supervision, or you're just required to register on a sex offender registry. So right now, as we sit today, we have twenty-one different people throughout the Village of Heartland that are on that sex offender registry. Three of those twenty-one are on active supervision. So we touch base with them on a regular basis, with Halloween coming up. We work with the Wisconsin Department of Corrections for the two that are on that supervision to ensure that they're not allowed to participate in any of the trick-or-treat activities. They actually send out a letter, um, that they have to, uh, the red, the sex offenders have to acknowledge that they can't have decorations out, they can't have their porch light out, they can't have candy, they can't do any of those type of things. That's something Wisconsin DOC has done for years, and we partnered with them on that for as long as I've been the chief of police here for the last seven years. The federal supervised individual, Mr. Ganos, has been advised that those would be good protocols to foul. I tried, um, talking his probation agent into saying Wisconsin, I think, does it right in that regard, but that is not a rule for his federal probation, so it's not something that's high, they, how they explain it to me is it's highly encouraged, but it's not a mandatory rule for him to foul. What we'll be doing, like we do every year, we'll be doing those extra patrols during Halloween time with some special attention to the Four Winds neighborhood. But I will caution, I can't be everywhere at once, I'm only gonna have a couple squads on, that's a busy time. We get some calls for service, we could be completely tied up for the night, so it's not an end-all, be-all. thing to, to rectify this issue, but it is things that we pay attention to, and they're all familiar with everyone that's on this list and where they reside and who they are.
Thank you, chief. In your situation, like you just heard, and I say in your situation, cause it's your neighborhood, I mean, I think everything that goes on in the village that's for the good comes from the ground up, just like same thing in any neighborhood. There's a lot of people that are working to make the whole village safe and make things work properly, but there's nothing wrong, if you just heard it, with you guys getting the word out. There's nothing that's illegal about that, saying, keep your kid away from that house if he does have the lights on, that's not illegal. So I'm just saying, we work together, uh, this doesn't happen just with the board, we work together, but I'm saying in your own neighborhood right now, you can make a difference by saying something, cause you just heard chief say. He called, he wanted the federal probation officer to say, hey, this is a stipulation on you, you have to shut it down, and they wouldn't do it. Those are the little things that we deal with on a daily basis, especially the PD where they're trying and saying, wait a minute, Wisconsin does it right. Why don't you make this a stipul- no, we'll suggest it, but we'll not make it mandatory, you know what I'm saying? I'm just letting you know, so, but thank you, chief, for throwing it out there.
Did have a conversation with Mr. Ganos, and it appeared that he was gonna be cooperative in that matter, but time will tell, obviously, I can't guarantee that. We could have the conversation and try, and then provide those extra patrols, but even if he were to do those things, I wouldn't have a law violation, cause he doesn't have that, that rule, where if our two state supervised individuals did that, they would be arrested and taken to jail immediately.
Would that, would that just their porch light be on? That's a violation, and it'd be like, nope, you're...
Yep, Department of Corrections puts agents on, a lot of their time spent in the city of Waukesha, cause that's where their volume is. If anyone's homeless, they're required to report to the Department of Corrections actual office in the city of Waukesha until trick or treat hours are over for different communities. And then if there's any violations, we work hand in hand with Department of Corrections, and they are more than willing to place a probation pro hold, and that person would be taken into custody. Unfortunately for you guys, the federal system doesn't quite work that way for that particular individual. But again, we will be doing extra patrols. My staff is definitely thoroughly aware of the concerns with this being a new placement in the Four Winds subdivision, with that subdivision having a lot of children in it. And we do plan on doing extra patrols for that neighborhood, but I always caution that with, I get called away, and they're all tied up on calls, then those extra patrols aren't as much as I wanted. But we have to take those emergency situations, obviously, and prioritize our, our staff time. And I can only guess what that will be, it could be nothing, and we have that squad in your neighborhood the entire time, or I could get called away and I'm not there that much at all that night. So while it sounds good, it, it may not work as well as, as intended, just depending on a call, calls for service that night.
I hope that you guys were, and I hope that some of this was sufficient, as I said, we're going through the process, I hope you guys will stay engaged and, and either reach out to some of us by email, or myself, or the village, uh, or PD. Yep, but I, no, I really hope it makes it a lot easier for us when there's others that are like, hey, I think this, hey, I, I mean, I, I really mean that. It truly does, it makes it a lot easier when you know there's other citizens that are like, yeah, I was part of this also, you know? So I think we do it together, I really mean that, so.
And the hard thing with getting the footage right is, someone's always not gonna be part of that footage.
Right.
Even in your case with the subdivision, we provided the village board some maps with just different, um, areas highlighted with what that would look like. For again, that information gathering stages, so from that current seven fifty all the way up, every two hundred and fifty feet up to two thousand, and the first time that particular property hits is at two thousand feet. And then you still have some houses that are past that, that won't. So there's always that weird line that... From, uh, the church does not count.
Why is that?
Cause it's not a child facility. If the church had a school, it would be...
The school that just closed by my house is still an operating church, but now neighborhood's wide open, cause the school's gone. So you're right, we gotta change, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
And you could see where that footage, it, it's very dependent on what, like, uh, the president acknowledged earlier, we looked at, what about walking trails, cause kids would be on walking trails, they're secluded. The hard thing is some are private, some become public, in the sense that our Ice Age Trail runs through the community. Well, if you use that and you said two hundred and fifty feet, I mean, a lot of the community right there is gone, even though it's a lot smaller restriction, just depends on what your zones are and what that coverage is, so you're playing this, I'll call subjective game to try to get it right, and there's always gonna be a line that someone's not happy with, and that's the unfortunate part of it.
I'll say it, I know we're getting late, and then I'll be done, unless there's something else you guys want, I mean, there's situations we've had, and I think I'm at liberty to say this, but we had a situation once while I've been the president, where, uh, and I'm saying this because I hope that you guys are cognizant more than of just this neighborhood, and I know you are, but I'm saying, it is really something to be aware of, of everything that's going on in our neighborhoods, and for, especially for kids. But, you know, we, it's so many situations, and I mean, they see it a lot, they see stuff that's just disgusting and sick in the police department, but you know, we had a situation where all of a sudden, someone had a friend in Bristol Cone had allowed some friend that told him a story, it sounds like him just manipulated him, told him a story, I lost my job, this and that, can I stay at your house? Long story short, wife comes home, friends upstairs, daughter's upstairs. Wife calls husband, husband comes home, husband's getting ready to kill the person in the bedroom, or that's suspected, where the police are then telling him, hold on, don't do that, cause we're gonna turn this into you being the person that we're trying to help, and all of a sudden, it's a really messed up situation. I'm not telling that story because how upset the husband got, I'm telling the story because, and I don't wanna put too much focus on it, so, cause we are in a normal public meeting. But this person had no idea, and this person was like a friend, and it was right in their own house. They were able to stop things, but it was still a horrible situation, and, uh, not good, uh, but those kind of things happen, and no one even realizes where they're coming from, it's someone close, so I think the most important thing is to just be cognizant, regardless of what our laws are, I th- I think that's the message PD would send also, and if you do ever see anything, do not hesitate to call, don't be worried about, oh, it might be a false alarm, I mean, call, but we're, we're right with you, most of us are parents, actually, I think all of us are parents. We're all parents, we all have kids, some larger than others, um, but, I mean, I, I'll let the other board members add in anything they want to, but we're really trying to work the problem, I mean, I, I hope that you guys feel that way, cause we really are, we're really trying to work it, and yeah, we do say we're working a tightrope, no one up here is against. We can swing for the fences and go and try it, you know, we'll get it right, but that's all we're trying to do is get it right, so, I hope you guys stay engaged with us. Anybody else that wants anything, I've talked long enough, thank you, guys. Anything you wanna add, Rick, it's your neighbor.
Talked about, just wanted to know a little bit more details with each perimeter, so.
Let's find out more about the percentages and then...
And the school, that's, I mean...
Make a decision.
We'll do, we'll, we'll do a gathering with the village board members and the residents from Four Winds, and we can take these maps, and we could just send people, and they can count little sections, so we'll know all the residents, cause there's a lot of little squares on there, but maybe that'd be fun, and people would see, and they'd be like, alright, you know, but. Anybody else with anything? We'll keep on working it, please keep in touch.
So we'll take a look, we'll try and look at a couple of the maps, count some of the houses, you gotta remember any little speck that covers it. You have to also be cognizant when we go out further, if you get rid of all of like Heart Ridge, now you're essentially not providing any affordable living situations too. Right now, people could live in Windrush, Sand Hill, Bristol Cone, Mary Hill, and Jeff's neighborhood.
So, is there any river reserved?
Adam on there too, no?
Yeah, Adam's wide open, no.
So, we, we did talk with Hector, his, uh, his recommendation is obviously not to change it. We brought it forward because if you seven want to, that we can, um, you know, the last suit was six figures plus. Um, so there's just that concern with the attorney, so.
Appreciate the engagement. Anything you want us to add, would be good for tonight?
Give us a little while to count them. I was starting to count them.
It, it does take a little bit. We have announcements now.
I'll start, I'll start us off since I got the microphone right here.
There you go.
Uh, one thing that came up a couple weeks ago is the federal government did release some grants, we weren't sure if they would go live or not, and some of the shutdown and things happening as they are. But they actually did push out some federal grants, one of those grants that we were interested in included a body camera grant. As you're all aware, we have squad cameras, we do not have body cameras, and all my officers are actually very, uh, excited that we could dip our toes in the body camera waters, cause it really, at the end of the day, offers a great protection for them and the day and age that we are in policing. With that, we got some different quotes for different vendors, but as you know, our squad camera systems, it's called GTAC. It's a system that we've been using now for several years that we actually got that fully grant funded, um, when we went live with that system. We're looking to try to stay with that in the sense that you want those two to be able to work together, and you don't want two different brands of video going, and they're not integrating, and then think of it this way, um, I have to have then a separate squad microphone, plus a body cam, I have more microphones on this police officer than I know what to do with. So we looked at sticking with the GTAC platform, one, because it's very cost effective, and two, it is a good product. There's some other products out there that, um, I would call higher end, but you pay for that big time, to the point that we could probably add officers to the street instead of having that type of technology. And as a reminder, the technology brings no efficiency to our job, the people that sell this stuff will tell you it does, but it does not, it actually brings inefficiency to the job in the sense that every second a video is gonna be watched and dictated into a police report. We went from maybe an hour long report to a two, three hour long report because of that process, so it actually brings the officer inside the PD more than I would care for, but it is something that in this day and age is very looked at. Um, to have, we're, for that system would be about forty-three thousand dollars, and we're hopeful that we'd be able to cover that entire amount with grant funding. Even though we'd be able to cover that amount, just one thing to always be aware of, just like the squad camera video, we do have those ongoing annual license costs that we talked about at budget, those never go down. They always go up, they're subscription based, they definitely know that, that, they understand that those revenues have to be in place to keep them afloat. And that really covers our retention of the video, storage of the video, and that's state law, and when it comes to body camera, that we have to, even if I accidentally turn it on, that video's gotta be kept for a period of time, because of anything that can be accused, or done, or said, there's that retention period, and that's all gonna be saved on their cloud service. And then if we need it for evidentiary purposes, we then, what we call property inventory, or put that into evidence through a different system that we have at the police department, that's a little more cost effective than keeping it through the vendor themselves. Um, and those, and then also redaction, there's a redaction software that, license that we'd have to pay, and that is something you absolutely need, because almost every video I release, I have to redact. And then the other hidden cost in that is, a person has to do that. So we believe we can manage that within our current staffing model, but that is something that's gonna add workload to our current staff as well, because there'll be that much more video to now go through and redact and work through, but with just the body camera ongoing costs, it'd be about ten thousand dollars a year, just in storage and redaction costs on a licensed basis to cover our size agency. And that's to include what we already do with the squad cameras, which is about, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars right now. But every year, that never goes away, and I'm sure it doesn't go down ever, but just something to be aware of. If we are successful in that grant, you definitely will see me bringing it to the board for recommendation for approval, and then see where we go from there.
Chief, I think that's awesome, and if I could just, I do wanna say something for the board, but it is something to honestly think about, because I always look at situations like this, from a taxpayer standpoint of razor. They're gonna give you a razor with two blades, and you're gonna have to keep buying those blades, but the, the razor was free, but the blades are not cheap, I'm just saying, cause there is an ongoing cost along with the staffing costs, that's something to be thought about. But, anyway, thank you, chief.
Yep.
Other chief?
This week at the firehouse, um, our three heavies at the end of the week, Thursday and Friday, will be in their annual service and pump testing, so that'll be done by Jefferson Fire and Safety, who's done it the last few years for us. Couple of minor maintenance issues that they're gonna take care of also for us, so that'll take those down, um, one at a time usually, so they don't completely go down, we have nothing to fight a fire with, but, um, we are, we've started an officer process within the department, uh, looking to promote two lieutenants, and then an assistant chief, so. Those will be ongoing, they have to have the information to me by the fifth of November.
On top of that, um, we also have one full-time applicant that we're in interview processes with now, he is actually from out of state currently, so he is traveling up here on the seventh of November to do kind of a dual interview slash scenario based testing, just to see where he's at with his skill level and, um, understanding of what the field is, and then continue on with that process going forward from there. Um, but looking forward to seeing him and seeing what he can produce for us.
Okay, so winter, spring rec guide is about to go off to the printer, that registration will open up in early December, so that's coming up here pretty quick, uh, I've also been working on securing locations for the food donation bins for the holiday train, so I have almost a dozen lined up for that already. Um, and then for the board, I sent you guys, I've been working on a hometown sponsorship packet. Um, so if you guys could take a look at that and let me know if you have any feedback or changes or suggestions, that would be great.
Uh, we are starting to get into the midst of a heavy leaf pickup, hasn't really started too bad yet, uh, but that's still in operation right now. Looking forward to getting some of the parts and the main controllers for those lift station upgrades at Arlene, Rustic, and Shadow Ridge, uh, those parts were ordered in May, and we still have not seen those, so, uh, that stuff all takes some time, but that's all I have.
Tom, I wanted to just ask, I've had some people in the community come to me and ask if leaf pickup could be extended, because it seems that, um, the trees are late in dropping. And, um, just wanted to put that out there to see, what, our, our current date ends right before Thanksgiving, right?
Yep, November sixteenth. So I will let you know that I've been here for three years, and we've never completely ended on that date.
They've always done an extra week, but at least it gets people to stop.
Or, or two or three, but we, we like to keep that date down to try and get most of the leaves, leaves out at that point. Just because it'll, it'll be a never ending cycle if we just keep going and keep going, you know? Cause as soon as we pass, all of a sudden, I get a phone call that, you missed us, it's like, no, our truck was just past that, you know, so, that's kind of, we, we, between myself, Leo, um, we definitely take a, a drive around, take a look and see what's actually out there on the roads, and if it's warranted, we will send it back out. We never do a dead stop on that date, but if you, you know, residents can't get everything out to that date would be beneficial for us to make sure we're ready, you know?
Yep, I know, I've seen you guys out past that date before.
Definitely.
Just appears like this is a late year, so.
Yeah, and I mean, a lot of times too, uh, if, if we catch a snowfall in between there, then we're really, you know, that, that, that usually buttons it up pretty quick. Cause, uh, our plows will just push it right back onto the yards.
Thank you.
Tom, Tom actually just reminded me of another thing I meant to mention, but don't forget winter parking's also coming. Uh, it's that time of year, but that's November first through March, that, that we're on, no parking on the village streets from two to eight AM, so that they could do their plow operations and keep the road safe.
Uh, just was gonna remind everybody, you know, we've talked about it a couple times tonight for bad reasons, but trick or treat is Friday. And, uh, get your, get your candy buckets ready and pass now, six to eight on Friday. And, uh, yeah, enjoy yourselves.
Know what I'm expecting when I stop over. Anything else? We have, thank you, Adam, for hitting on trick or treat, six o'clock to eight o'clock. We have Heartland Lights coming on December fifth. Uh, and we have, the holiday train is coming on December tenth. Um, speaking of going off of, uh, what chief said with, uh, win- winter, what? Oh yeah, there's an information session tomorrow on what we're doing with the building. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of new information. There'll be some information. There's not a lot of new information. Um, I don't know how many will attend, but there will be there for, what is it, six to what?
Tomorrow at six PM.
Six PM. Um, that's on the, uh, new village hall and police station, uh, talking about that. Um, what I do want to touch on is, uh, chief brought up winter parking. I want to touch on regular parking. I do believe I'm correct in saying that a car can park. I mean, we don't have restrictions that say you can't overnight park and people can park in public parking lots. Um, but I don't believe that they can park for more than twenty-four hours without moving their car. Is that accurate or not accurate? According to our ordinance.
According to our ordinance, they can. Uh, what they can't do is abandon their vehicle. So what we do to try to judge what, whether a vehicle's abandoned or not, or the tires flat because they left them sitting for god knows how long. Is the registration current? We look at a lot of those type of things as to is it abandoned in the lot or not. Obviously for DPW plow operations, they do have to plow all those parking lots, the municipal lots on north here, all those. And if there are vehicles parked, it does make it difficult. But as you said, per our ordinance, we do not have an overnight ordinance on the parking lots, only the village streets.
During the summer even though, I'm talking about the village streets, a car should be moved every twenty-four hours, correct?
No.
Okay. I'm looking, I'm going off of that motorcycle. That's on Capitol. That was, I'm just saying, I think that'd be a good idea. Sorry. Never mind, there are no real parking restrictions on the streets except for there is winter parking. I did think, because there's commercial vehicles aren't supposed to be there for more than two hours.
We have different commercial vehicle parking.
I misspoke. There is no restrictions. I thought they did have to move.
And it's just abandoned vehicles, same premise that I spoke to in the parking lots. If a car were to be, if it was, that be parked on the street, we would look at it as an abandoned vehicle. And again, we use some of that criteria to determine whether it's abandoned or not. We call the, we call the owner, ask them.
Yep.
Can't get ahold of anyone, the flat tires, no registration.
Yep.
Then we tow the vehicle off the roadway as an abandoned vehicle. But there is no restriction outside of winter parking for just street parking per se.
Okay, alright. Um, I hit on the, uh, I don't have anything else.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to adjourn this meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this meeting's adjourned.